Again, we call a meeting to order and we'll begin with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their father, our representative, President-elect Trump. Under God, in the visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to point out to those of you in the audience, I'm not the mayor, but because of our challenges, I run the meeting from here. But the first thing on our agenda is approval of a public hearing and village board minutes from June 2, 2022.
Moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. The next item, the mayor has some proclamations he'd like to read.
Yes, I do. Before I get started, I have to apologize to Megan Collins Tabor because when I was mentioning family links and her brothers sitting up on the podium as one of our village trustees named Collins, so I didn't want to shortchange Nate for being part of the family.
I'm used to it.
All right. First proclamation is in recognition of the accomplishments of Owen Weaver. Whereas the pentathlon is a grueling five-event test of overall athletic ability and endurance, and whereas Owen Weaver is an exceptional competitor in the pentathlon, which includes the 110 high rolls, the high jump, the shot put, the long jump, and the 1,500-meter run, and has competed over two days. And whereas Owen also helped his Baldensville team this season by competing in the 400-meter run, the 4x400 relay, the 100-meter dash, and the triple jump for Coach Bill Spicer's Bees. And whereas he was part of the winning 4x400 relay in the SCAC championship and won the triple jump. He also captured wins in those events at the Section III Class A event. And whereas Owen, competing in the Section III state qualifier, scored 3,321 points in the pentathlon, ranking him first in the state and first in the nation with that score. And whereas he won the New York State Public High School Athletic Association State Pentathlon Championship with 3,205 points. And whereas he is qualified to compete in the New Balance Nationals in Philadelphia, and he will further his education at Coopstown, Pennsylvania. Therefore, I, Richard A. Clark, Mayor of the Village of Baldensville, do use the powers vested in me by the state of New York to declare Owen Weaver as of June 11, 2022, the best all-around track athlete in New York State. Congratulations. Maureen Baller, she has a copy of the proclamation framed for you to take home.
I'm gonna give it to him right now, Dave.
Come on up.
Get you on TV. Congratulations. Something for your wall.
All right. The second proclamation is in recognition of the accomplishments of the 2022 Baldensville Girls and Boys Lacrosse Teams. Whereas lacrosse is a sport with true roots among Central New York Native Americans, and whereas Baldensville was one of the first high schools in the country to field a lacrosse team. And whereas the Baldensville Girls and Boys Lacrosse Teams reached the pinnacle of lacrosse superiority by winning state championships Saturday. Both teams, coincidentally, defeating teams from Northport. The 18-2 Girls Team won 15-9, and the 19-1 Boys Team 10-7. And whereas the Girls Team won its second state title, the first one coming in 2000, it was also a measure of revenge since Northport beat Beaville for the championship in 2019. For the Boys, this is the first championship, having been denied in the state finals in 1992. And whereas Girls Head Coach Megan Collins Tabor and Boys Head Coach Matt Wilcox are products of this very Baldensville system, and therefore some credit must go to previous successful head coaches, Doug Rowe and Pete Urini, for nurturing our coaches' greatness. And whereas Brianna Peters led the Girls in the finale with five goals and three assists, and Carly Desanong led four goals. Peters joined Mia Posey, Sophia Iano, and Sidney Nutala on the all-tournament team. Goalie Samantha Tangue was cited for crucial goalkeeping in the semifinal. Carson Dial led the Boys Team in the championship with three goals. Trey Ordway and All-American Keegan Lynch added two goals. Jacob Chiz won the opening face-off, and the Bees never trailed. Also cited were Colin Doyle, Austin McClintnick, Tucker McNich, Nick Carey, and Academic All-American Brayden Pennefeather Stevenson. And whereas, the Post Standard made it official on Sunday with a front-page headline that said, "Can't Beat the Bees." Therefore, I, Richard A. Clark, declare by the power vested in me as mayor by the state of New York, that as of June 11, 2022, Baldensville is herefore to be referred to as the lacrosse capital of New York State, and that title should exist for a minimum of 365 days. Congratulations, Girls and Boys.
Say what? You're up. I've got proclamations, but I don't... I'm getting them. I'll wait till everybody's here. The coaches, you wanna come up too? I don't... One of these, one is for the guys, who happen to be standing in front of all the girls. Congratulations. Congratulations. I would hope we might consider some additions to the Pride of Baldensville sign that exists over...
Yeah.
On whatever street that is. Syracuse Street? That's a Swigler on this side of the river. Well, congratulations again. Unless the mayor has something else to say, we'll move along on the agenda. Okay. Next item on the agenda is public comment, and it's James Thrasher. Trasher. How he's... If you guys wanna run, this is your chance.
No, you guys gotta stay.
That's incredibly impressive. Good evening, honorable members of the village board. Ari Goldberg from the law firm of Barclay Damon. I'm here on behalf of the applicants for the rezoning and site plan application, CDS. Joined tonight by Justin Morando and Pat Pinkerton from CDS, as well as James Thrasher from CHA, who is our project engineer. So, we're excited to be here before you tonight to see how much pride you have in your sports teams, but also because we wanna talk about CDS's project at 19 Phillips Street to convert that undeveloped vacant lot into affordable housing to serve both the village and the surrounding community. And to bring CDS's vision to life, what we require from this village board is a rezoning of the property from the existing R1 zoning classification to R2, which permits multifamily housing. And really, the only reason we're here tonight is to introduce ourselves, the project team, to meet you, the village board, and the mayor. And then to also request that you declare yourselves under the State Environmental Quality Review Act the lead agent for purposes of conducting a Type 1 coordinated environmental review, and also refer the rezoning application to the planning board for their recommendation. And after that, I'm sorry, excuse me. And that's really our ask for tonight. And also, as I mentioned, I want to introduce ourselves. So I'd ask that Justin Morando from CDS is gonna talk a little bit about their mission and everything.
How you doing? I'm Justin Morando with CDS Housing, CDS Life Transitions. I don't know if this is an appropriate part to bring up, but I go to, my kids go to Fairport, and we kinda got manhandled in the state semifinals. But it was really nice to see you over here. But I'm gonna leave some literature about CDS. We are a non-for-profit organization. We've been around for over 40 years, going on 45 years. We're a very diverse non-for-profit. Too much to go over, and I don't wanna bore everybody with all the details here. But our mission is, if I can leave this right here, and then you can take a look. We are a mission-based non-for-profit that are looking to the better lives of everybody in all the communities that we work through. We're in Webster, we're in Rochester, we're in Elmira, we're in Cicero. I really would like to highlight Cicero, so anybody that would like to see the quality of work that we've done, we're on our second project out there. I'd be more than happy to tour, show anybody around. We are about doing quality, affordable housing. A lot of what we do, you can't distinguish between market rate housing. We're very, we take a lot of prowling in what we do. We showed a lot of examples prior to this, and we would really encourage anybody that's interested to reach out to me, contact me. I'd be more than happy to show you. Obviously, we can get referrals from the town of Cicero doing two projects now there. But I'll kinda leave it at that, 'cause I don't wanna kinda drone on for, you know, you've got a meeting that you gotta get through. So, thank you very much.
Where's the project in Cicero exactly?
Knowledge Lane. Do you know where the hockey arena is?
Yes.
Over on Knowledge Lane. We're right there next to the library. And then the second one is right on Brewer Ten. So it's going right across, and we are gonna be done in...
October this year.
October.
Okay. The first one's called Spring Village, if you look it up.
Yep. Absolutely. Yep.
As we're looking at the plan... As I'm looking at the plan, you or Aunt Mita, where Phillips Street and... Oh, okay. Now I can see. Inter...
It's supposed to be James' job, but...
Yeah, he's doing a great job. So the project's located at the intersection of Phillips and O'naita, so school is just down the way. So in starting this process, you know, as Ari said, we're here for a referral to the planning board, start the process, get your initial feedback, and then we would do back to you all. Start the seeker process, you know, the determination of who the lead agency at the end of the day is. But if you could deem it and pass it out, and if the planning board wants to be that at the end of the day, you can. We've started a traffic study, 'cause school officially, the high school is done two days ago with classes. So our traffic engineers did counts. We contacted the state DOT. They're like, they just wanted us to analyze O'naita Street and 31. So, and then in the future, we can get into the density of the buildings, the look of the buildings, but you know...
I'm pleased to see Pine Street connecting out that way.
So, that's overall, all those things that we go through, the planning board process, stormwater, the visuals, the landscape land grading, lighting, all that would be taken care of. But the most important thing right now is to get the, from our side is to have the property rezoned, so we can do the project, 'cause under the current zoning, we couldn't complete. So, we appreciate your time. If there's any questions...
I have questions.
Yeah.
Are you going through Osida?
Right now.
Is there a plan to do that?
Through the IDA?
Not at this point, but...
We are in the... Pilots.
So, that's something we will be talking about at a later point. But yes, that would be something that we would like to discuss. We're not looking for a full pilot, but as we get into the conversation, we recognize that we use all the, a number of resources. But there are elements to our application applying to New York State where we do like to engage at some level. It could be very minor, it could be...
I could add a little bit, Justin. The majority of the capital funding that we'll be using to develop this project will be state tax credits. And one component of the scoring for the selection of the award that they issue each year is the local support that we receive. So things like getting a rezone, but also potentially getting a pilot, even regardless of the amount, starts to show the commitment and the buy-in from the local community. So that's something we will engage on, but we're not at that stage of the development.
Are any of the properties, property tax exempt?
No, they would not, as of right, be property tax exempt. They would be under a specific designation in terms of how the assessment would be, would be...
And I'm just curious.
But no, as of right, have tax exemption as an affordable development.
Okay. Is this a phased project? Are you gonna build a building at a time and occupy it and build another building and occupy it, or are you gonna split it up and build these four? What's the...
Yep.
How you slicing it up?
So, the original intent right now was to do two phases. One, that we'll do approximately 70 units. And depending on the success of that one, that's why we're going for the entire section that we would build on from there.
So what we're seeing there is more than 70?
Correct. So you're talking about 70 would be literally checking off rate, if that was helpful at all. But you're talking maybe upwards of 140 down the road. But starting off 70 to make sure that this works, this model works.
I can just add that, for purposes of environmental review required by the state, you would be considering both the rezoning itself, the paper change, and then the subsequent possible full phase, Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the entire project. That's what we request. And that way, your environmental review was all-encompassing, and we wouldn't have to come back for that additional review. So Phase 1 is the only portion that we're currently envisioning going before the state to try and get funding for. And in the most idealistic timeframe, we would probably be looking at opening up those buildings in roughly 2025, based off of securing the funding and then going through the full construction period. But in full transparency, we wanna open it up to a prospective Phase 2. If we were to go to that level, we would like, you know, for all of you to have thought through that as well at this point. So we don't have a current plan to go to the Phase 2, but if we were to do a Phase 2, given the size of the site at 15 acres, that's the rough plan that we would envision. But that would be subsequent to this current phase that would wrap up in roughly 2025, most likely.
Would you be utilizing the, in addition to Phillips access, would you be asking for the extension of the Paper Street?
It's probably...
Early in the proceedings, I would, you'd wanna use that early.
Correct. So Phase 1 is going through the Paper Street.
Yeah.
Phase 1 lines, everyone should, we dropped off 22 copies of the plan. So hopefully, they've been distributed by Greg. He's not here tonight. But Phase 1 line here, so access would be constructed, so two points at ingress and egress. This would be constructed out to this point, which really acts as a hammerhead for any emergency vehicles where they could back out and then work.
And Jim, does it line up with the existing Pine Street, which is south of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The units you've built in Cicero, what's the rent structure for those?
So, they're, I'm not sure where I got that question from. Oh. From the police chief, I will certainly address you directly. The structure is based off area median income. So we're not looking at what you would consider as Section 8 public subsidy. This is more a graduated scale. So what we'd be putting together here would be 30 to 80% of area median income. So these are folks who have income, they could even have fairly substantial income going all the way up to the 80% income tier. But what this housing does is it provides a fixed rate and rates that grow a little less steep than what you would see with some market rate rents. We would be restricted by the state, 2% increases annually, and it'll allow individuals in that middle income tier, if you will, to be able to rent affordably without being what they call rent overburden, which means we would cap it at 30% of their monthly income. But you would see folks in here from 30% of the area median income all the way up to 80%.
And the name of the apartment units in Cicero?
Spring Village is the current site that is operational, and then the adjacent site to Phase 2 will be called Monarch Commons. If you go see Spring Village, you'll see Monarch Commons under construction. That's about 65, 70% complete.
Okay. And how many units right now do you have operational in Cicero?
There are 50 in Spring Village, and there will be 50 in the second phase as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, question.
Officer, what do we, what do we need to do tonight?
Well, let me, for the new board members too, I'd like to explain that several years ago, this property was zoned as a planned development district, but it was never developed. At my suggestion, the board rezoned it R1, so that there wouldn't be any question as to what would be taking place there, because it had been zoned as PDD and left vacant for so many years. What we would do, and what I would suggest that the board would do, is if you wish to rezon it, to create a planned development district with its own rules relative to what would, what could take place there, just like we have on Downer and other areas. And I can go ahead and draft a local law that would, that would change that zoning. We could work together on that.
Absolutely.
Does it need to be a PDD, or...?
Well, I think under the circumstances, because of the, of the type of construction, everything that's gonna be going on, I think a PDD would be, would be better, because you, you might be able to, there might be some things that, that could be put in the rules that the board might wanna do, other than just have it rezoned as multifamily. Because now you've got setback requirements and that sort of thing. So, this way, this way, like the cluster zoning, which, which you'd end up getting, PDD, I think, is, is better to take care of the cluster issue.
So is that the first step? We don't do anything else until you...
Well, and we would then, and we would rezon, but we would also, of course, the action, any action taken by the board, which is what the rezoning would be, would have to be also, there would have to be a resolution under SEER. And so we would ask for the environmental forms to be submitted as a Type 1 because of the size of the program.
So attorney, we did submit a full environmental assessment form with our application materials.
Okay.
I think a Type 1 coordinator view is appropriate.
Yeah.
The only change from what we requested in that FEA, that full environmental assessment form, would be, instead of R2, you just write PDD. And I think as planned, there wouldn't be any area variance or height variances, setback variances under R2, but with PDD being the same end result, and I do, sounds like there's advantages to it, comfortable with whatever the village is, 'cause I think the end result is the same.
Yeah. And then the other thing that the, you know, once, once that takes place, the board would also declare itself to be lead agency. I don't know, there's not, the local law isn't before the board, so I think it might be a little premature.
We thought that the village board was the appropriate entity, because the rezoning is the first step.
Right.
But if the planning board is the more expert board, and that's appropriate, comfortable with that too. We thought that with the documents being submitted, that they could at least declare themselves lead agency, and that I could work with your office to draft a lead agency solicitation letter. But if you wanna send it to the planning board first and have that conversation...
No, that's okay. We could, that, those are with our code enforcement officer with Greg?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And that, this is the materials that we've got here.
Should be a cover letter.
Yeah.
Yep.
On-change application, EAF, and the layer plans.
The board could accept this and declare itself to be lead agency under, under SEER, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and direct that the appropriate notifications be sent.
Okay. We're gonna put that as Item F under new business.
Okay.
And by then, hopefully, you'll have the words that we need to get it so it's right, pointing us as the lead, this board as the lead agency under SEER.
Not to press our luck, but could we add an Item G for a referral of the rezoning to the planning board for their recommendation? Of course. Whatever he says.
If, if our attorney recommends it, certainly...
I mean, we generally do that, this manner of practice here too, so...
Perfect.
So that would be G?
Yeah.
EAF G? As a separate item, or would we make a motion referring it to the plan? Okay. Okay. Anything else you guys needed tonight?
The only other thing that we were going to ask for during our application process through the various entities we go through, that we would be requesting a letter of support from either the mayor or the town. So that's just something for, we wanted to put on your radar.
Yeah, we have it on the agenda to authorize the mayor to sign the support letter.
Oh, great. Thank you very much. And I was just gonna leave, if anybody's interested in setting up a tour to look at Cicero or something like that, I'll leave a couple cards here too.
Can I ask a question just out of curiosity?
Sure.
For the purposes of a project like this, what is the, defined as the area when you seek a median income, and you say for the area? Is it county, town, village? What is the area?
County.
For the county?
It's based on the county, yeah. And what establishes it.
Thank you.
Does Seeker have an end date? If, I mean, if this Phase 2 happens, is it still being covered under what we're doing now, or does it have to go across the field for a Phase 2? That may happen three years from now.
Yeah, no, Seeker doesn't have, I mean, we, we would look at the whole thing. There's the, there's no time limit on it relative to that. Always, we would look at the entire project and determine the, well, as far as, first of all, we would, we would go for the rezoning. So we're looking at the, the project as far as rezoning is concerned. The actual site plan and the approval of the, of the actual construction and the, the phasing in of the, of various portions of that will be done before the planning board. And they would also have to adopt resolutions relative to the environmental quality concerning the, the construction of the, of the buildings and the water runoff, et cetera. 'Cause we're not, we're not dealing with that per se. I mean, we're looking at this, we're not, we're not approving the, the actual construction, the location of the roads and that sort of thing. That's, that's something the planning board's gonna deal with.
Yeah, the village attorney's correct. The only extra portion I would add is that Seeker frowns upon segmenting the project review. So yeah, you're looking at the rezoning, that's the municipal action in your purview. Your Seeker review considers the construction of both Phase 1 and Phase 2, but the site plan approvals are separate. And if there is, the only time I think we would have to ever come back for a different Seeker review is if what we proposed to you, and you, if you saw it in your wisdom to issue a negative declaration under Seeker, we would have to come back if there was a substantial change between what you reviewed and what we maybe wanted to build in, in four years' time.
Any other questions by the board? I have one more. I printed out an agenda, and I don't have the, the letter. Is that denied on your agenda?
The motion is here under James.
Oh, it's up under James?
Yes.
The one I can't find. I've read the letter.
Okay.
I just missed where the motion is. Okay. Did somebody wanna say something? Did you wanna say something?
I just have a quick question. I, my name's Andrew Nolden. I'm actually the resident of 97 East O'naita Street, the corner of O'naita and Phillips. So this is my backyard that we're, we're actually discussing. And I was more, I remember a few years ago, probably about six, seven, that the Y was looking at this very parcel. And that was shot down, I think, by the village. And do, does anybody remember why or what? You know, I don't know if it was for the increase in traffic and, and having something like that in the village, but I didn't know where some of that was, because that's, I mean, right now, my, some of my biggest concerns when it comes to this is already 60 Road Phillips Street. I mean, you call it 60 Road, 'cause that's what the trucks and cars are doing right up to the stop sign, if they stop. You know, so I, I struggle to get out of my driveway at times as it is. And so there's, there's a lot of, like, I mean, obviously, I'm personally impacted by this project, you know, but I didn't know what happened with the YMCA when that was discussed before. They chose ultimately the River Road location to be, I didn't know what the, how that came about and why that was, that this, this property was looked away from, from the village's standpoint.
I never even, I don't recall the Y looking at it. I remember they looked at the mall down on Smokey Hollow Road and rejected, this body didn't reject it. The Y rejected that because there weren't enough fields and it wasn't what they were interested in. That very well may be what happened there, but I don't ever recall it either, 'cause I, there wouldn't be much room for fields there either.
No. Well, it depends on how much you take down. I mean, that's, I think that's, what, 13 to 16 acres?
But it's got some terrain.
So, yeah.
I do recall discussion at the time.
Really?
About that, but I don't recall what it was, as, as you mentioned. So there were a number of settlements under consideration, including one in Radisson.
Yeah, I don't believe this body though rejected it.
Okay. I don't believe that would be, that was the case. And I've been coming to these meetings for...
And it would have been under the...
I appreciate, I, I have been delinquent, so I apologize for not knowing everything going, you know, for...
I, I don't know the exact issues associated with... I, I don't know the exact issues associated with how they made their sites larger.
Nope, that's, that's fair.
Lucky for them, I think the YMCA people ruled out several different places. We, we were never involved in the decision.
Okay. That's that. That was, because that was one of my concerns. I didn't know if the, you know, people in the village weren't happy with having, because this four corners here is, I mean, we're, we're hitting crux of population, what can be handled. And so that's, you know, adding 70 plus 70, and I mean, imagine at least what, what do you anticipate? Two cars per, per unit?
We usually average about one and a half cars.
Okay.
That's what we do for the parking that we would put on Sycamore.
So, yeah, so another 210 cars in, in that area. And I know, you know, and I thank you, Eric, because I, my neighbor went to you and, and talked about some of the trucks coming from the industrial side coming down, but that's, you know, we, we're, that's still big. So there's a lot of traffic there and that's one of my biggest concerns is just the, the explosion of more. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else on with comments on this issue? Hearing what?
I would like to put off the motion to send, and a lettering because I think our board just saw this whole idea tonight. This is the first time they've been exposed to it. People haven't even had a chance to formulate questions or concerns. I'd like to give them a couple days to look at the plans and say, see, that doesn't make sense or this doesn't make, you know, before we get too far along in the process. We've kind of made that a sort of unwritten rule with our board that they would not be given information and asked to vote on it that night except in emergency situations. That's my take. If the board doesn't agree with me, that's my.
So waiting three weeks is that?
Or the letter of support or the referrals to the other?
The letter of support.
The letter of support, yeah, that's right.
We have a submission for July 11th for a funding source. So if it could, if you could review it and ask questions to us prior to that and get us a letter of support by that date. If you were so inclined, that would be helpful, but we can certainly wait a few weeks while you look at it and ask questions. Yeah, that'd be excellent.
We're going to make a decision by then, yeah, seventh is our next meeting, so.
Not a problem.
I'll make a motion to table it for tonight.
I can.
Is it James Treacher back in business?
I just made a motion to table it.
We have to wait for the motion to be brought up, all right? It's on the agenda.
Right, there was a motion to table, that's on.
Fair enough.
Okay, so we can move on to the next item of business, correct? Yeah, which is trustees' comments. And why don't we start with Nate? I'll just stick to the agenda tonight.
I'm, I'm going to call a brief executive session for a lease contractual matter. Other than that, I enjoyed the proclamation tonight. That was really nice to see everybody in house. And then we'll stick to the agenda.
I just want to note, because I have a big flashing sign out in the street in front of my driveway, that the state is going to start some construction in the village from the Four Corners out to the village line by the Chevy dealership on Syracuse Street, starting on Monday, working in the evenings, so people should expect traffic to be even more exciting than it usually is here in the village.
But they'll be happy to know we're getting them, or getting.
Yes, but this has been long, long wanted by everyone, so hopefully they will appreciate it and be patient. And congratulations to all the athletes that we recognize today and all of the athletes in Balden'sville, even if they're not the best in the state, they try hard. Other than that, I will stick to the agenda.
Okay, I'm the trustee, so I'm going next.
You go.
I just want to reemphasize to the rest of the board, we talked about this in the work session, that the local law that we passed number eight last session, we need the video conferencing policy and the extraordinary circumstances policy. So to think about things that might enter into that. Other than that, I'll stick to the agenda.
I'll stick to the agenda as well. Thank you.
I'll stick to the agenda as well. Thank you.
Now we go to the mayor for his comments.
Just a couple. I wanted to point out that there was a lot of criticism of our, of the concept we use. Have ARB approved business, paint colors and that type of stuff in regards to the angry smokehouse. People were upset that we had to stop work order, which we didn't. It was the owner stopped the work because he wanted to go and make sure he did it the right way. People can criticize all they want, but we, we've tried to establish that Balden'sville is an older community that thrives on accenting the age of buildings and stuff that we, and by the colors we use. I can't imagine how people would respond if we had somebody paint one of the buildings near the Four Corners shocking purple with orange trim or something. How could you let them do that? That's why we have an ARB. They met with the owner and then he said, why, why did you choose that color? He explained it to them and they said, fine, go with it. That's the way the system's supposed to work. And hats off to the ARB, hats off to Jeff Rogers because Jeff does things the way he likes. Kudos to the Rotary Club, great weekend with the Seneca River Days. Big crowd, big fireworks. Heard great, nothing but great things about it. Farmer's market started Tuesday. Mr. Bowery was very pleased with the crowd and the steady flow of people. And hopefully as time goes on, a lot more people realize it's there, that we will have even more people turn out. Just, I know there's been some talk, a while back, we had given Conifer a, a tax break through, we didn't give it to, you know, the county did, but it's been a while since they've gotten any work done because of COVID. Prices jumped, it was hard to get a hold of stuff that they would need to, to upgrade apartments. But I was talking to a fellow today who's been hired to help coordinate it and they're, they're looking for warehouse states to store cabinets, kitchen cupboards, that type of thing. And they are going to start with the work at Conifer, so people over there should be excited to know that's happening. Any, did, did the Public Works Committee have any discussion about the Alzheimer's Association request us to put signs in the parks to promote a September event?
Yes, we decided we weren't in favor of that.
You're not in favor, okay. Just make sure we didn't ignore it, that's all.
They think they could put them, we thought they could put them by the canal though. There's, there's a spot for signage down there. I think that'd be a good spot for them.
Okay.
And they need to go through the codes. It's a 30-day temporary sign.
Set up for mod session regarding litigation. So that would be an H, I guess.
All right.
G.
We're up to I and I'm dead.
Okay, that's all.
Okay. We'll go through the department heads, starting with our attorney.
I will stick with the agenda, except as I said, I would request an executive session on litigation matter.
The one that the mayor just mentioned?
Yeah.
Okay. Our village clerk.
I just wanted to mention that I did participate in a video conferencing webinar and that's where I, you know, received all the information that I passed on to you. The, the last page gave a chart that shows exactly, it, it really detailed it. So if you want to just take a look at that, you know, when you're reviewing it, I think that would be helpful just to show where the public can, you know, where, in which scenario the public can be present. Otherwise, I will stick to the agenda.
Did you send that to us via email?
I can. I did not. No, I just, I just saved it today.
Got to go to my, I got to remember to start going through the box again.
Okay.
Thank you. No code officer, so move along to the treasurer.
Two things that, I sent the board today, I think the link for the, the webinar on budgeting. That comes from the controller's office. I would encourage you to watch it, not really like a hair on fire emergency to watch it, but I would watch it before October or something like that, so you're familiar with requirements and we can kind of work collaboratively to, to kind of, you know, streamline that process. I need to send it to the department heads also, so that you're aware of, of the kind of things that we should be abiding by. And it's not, you know, it's not a big deal, I don't think. But second thing is we had our first meeting of what will become the finance committee, but right now it's the ARPA committee. And we, we put together the list of things that we've already committed to and spent money on, the list of things that are way in the pipeline, so we're pretty committed to them. And then the, the wants list, which is coming on, on the tail end of that. And we've kind of come to the conclusion that we've, our, all that adds up to about $145,000 more than what we're going to get for ARPA. So right now we're going through an exercise of prioritization, number one. And number two, seeing what other funding pipelines there are within our own finances. Like do some things, are some things, if they're lower priority, are they able to be put into an operating budget at some point? Are they able to be taken out of the water fund at some point, things like that? And so ultimately, by the next meeting, which will be before the next board meeting, we'd like to have a matrix that will help us decide on what projects we will immediately fund or recommend for immediate funding from you. And then what things we will still have a solution for, so the department heads can, can say, we're going to have this or we can get this. And then, you know, whatever's left. But I think the process will be good. It was a, it was a good group, great feedback from everybody who was there. And so I'm, I'm very excited about it, actually, if you can get excited about stuff like that. And that's good. Rest to the agenda.
Thank you. And I guess Ruth, the senior center's up next.
Just a couple things from our neighborhood advisor. Since we had the heat today, it reminds us that there is a program for folks to get room air conditioners for free if they're eligible. So if that's something you need, give Nancy a call at the center and she'll take care of that with you. And also the farmer's market coupons, we will be receiving them from the county sometime in July. You can call the center July 1st to get your name on the list to be notified when the distribution will happen. So those are kind of the two big things right now.
I'm across this list. I always thought that we jumped all around the room, but they're seated in correct order. So we're going right to Public Works.
That'd be mine.
After this long, I hope I have a towel.
You're up.
Just a quick thing on, on the, the state project out here, we've got a lot of phone calls on it. And people have been upset about the sidewalk work, the different work on the side of, of the road and really didn't realize this was all for, for paving the road. It's just been, the, the traffic's been terrible, couldn't get through the Four Corners. The state did a fantastic job in fixing what they fixed. They came in and they fixed most all the sidewalks and the corners. They went and rebuilt all the catch basins. It just hasn't been done since I've been here. And they made an extra effort in that area. They scoped things. They, they just, they did a lot of work and it was terrible to get through for a couple of weeks. And, and almost the management power went out here tonight, but, but they did a great job. Hopefully, after they blacktop it, it'll be, you know, it'll be done, everybody will forget about it, but they put a lot more effort into this area than I've ever seen them put in and it's gone, it's gone well. And it, it's been, it's been tough, but they, they did a great job out there. The contractors were great. It went really well. Little League Field, we're going to be, we've been over there for the last couple of days. We're getting ready to blacktop that, the driveway over there and the parking lot. The building needed some work. We put like 15 tons of blacktop over there, making, taking care of the entrances and the exits for the, for the building, for the machinery. We're hoping to award a company to do that next week. They're supposed to come in and oil and stone that, oil and stone that parking lot. That, that'll, that should look really nice when we're done. We're just putting the final touches on the blacktopping for the year with the CHIPS money and, and what we have. We, we could probably put that on the website if we wanted to. We picked a bunch of roads and we pretty much put that to bed. Hopefully by August, we'll get going on it. The only, the only problem is we're not a hundred percent sure what it's going to cost just because of the, of the oil prices and what the oil's doing. But we've got the same contract we had last year, did a fantastic job for us over on Downer and Tapestry. Those are the two worst streets that we have. I heard from an individual about striping. They're going to come back. Finally, I think they're coming in the next couple of weeks and get some of the striping done. We're going to do some of the parking lots, we're going to try to get tapping and, and downer striped again. That should, that should come around here. We're back to brush pick up next week. The Island started last weekend. They had a great crowd out there. They're going to be back here Friday night. With a promoter, that's going to get started again. They had a water break today, part of the Verizon. They're putting a lot of Verizon piping underground and they directional bore it and they go from pole to pole underground. And there was some confusion where the water main was, they got on top of the water main and broke it. And they were up there fixing that in pouring rain. It was, it was bad this afternoon, but they got that taken care of.
Where was that located?
That was right up on, on 48, right by Country Lane, right up by our tank up there.
Okay.
And they, they actually hit one of the lines going to one of the houses. And that was like an hour before it started raining. So I don't know if it had more water from the water break or from the rain, but Water Pump and Grower did a great job, got it buttoned up. The highway's out. We also started on some of the trees today. We got a bunch of trees to plant. We've got started on that. That's going to be a little slower process, but we're sorry, we're going to catch basins here soon because we got to fix all the catch bases before they come in and blacktop. Other than that, unless there's questions, we're all set.
I'm going to chief.
Thank you. Obviously, last week we had the Seneca River Days. Those went off very well, the firework event. Mike Lockwood, our lieutenant, does a great job of the operational plan for those types of things, just like he did for the Memorial Day Parade. And there's a couple of things we have to tweak for, for next year, just to ensure that everyone's safe, whether it's crossing the roadway there at Marble Street and a couple of other things. And I'm sure we'll work with the Rotary and, and those groups that, that are involved there. But that's, that's a nice thing. Other than that, I will stick with the agenda unless there's questions from anyone.
Okay, thank you. Pending business, discussion action regarding the proposed and edited 2022 Summer Concert Series agreement. Yeah, well. It's good for you. No, I'm just one of the trustees.
They just saw it electronically today.
Are there?
I pretty looked at it.
Is this an agreement that we've seen in the past or is this new?
This is, this is one that was, between the towns. This is one that was discussed at the last meeting and it was amended. And I understand the is that Rotary has approved it relative to their, their job is only training bills.
The Rotary's got more comments on it, but that doesn't affect the village board. Yes, I did see this contract, printed it out and wrote all over it.
Was, was there any change on it for us as far as us having personnel over there or anything? I haven't seen that.
The village should provide the premises, provide regular maintenance of the premises, which you do. Provide on-call maintenance services, so apparently they have your phone number. And provide for cleanup of the premises prior to each concert.
They had, it was, it was either a typo or something else that said after each. And I changed that so it was before each.
Perfect.
And then the typo where they had both before and after, and I said, no, it's after, it's before.
In the past, the two towns, you know, they ran that.
Everybody deals.
It was fantastic, it was always clean, we never had any problems.
I mean, the agreement looks fine to me, it's just a matter of whether the, let's say, I think it spells everything out.
It's interesting, they list four dates. I know the individual from Rotary who writes the checks has only written and reviewed contracts for three dates, but maybe there's something else coming up. Does it mean they have to put one on on the fortune if they sign this contract?
And those dates are all open, though? Do you know if those dates are open?
So, everybody's had a chance to look at it, does anybody want to make a motion?
This is probably silly, but I want to make sure that it's not going to be something, we've changed the language to specifically say that we'll provide for cleanup prior to each concert, there's nothing under the scope of services as to who is going to make sure that the property is brought back to its original conditions at the end of each concert.
That's generally what is done at the, at the end of the concert by the Public Works.
So is the...
In this particular one, the two towns always ran that, and when they left, it was clean. They picked it up, any mess that they had, they picked up.
They do also complete a Paper Mill Island Agreement, and it states it in there.
Okay. Okay.
Have the two towns agreed to this?
Yes.
So that there is a signed, because I...
We don't, we don't have a sign, no, but I think Van Buren met yesterday, and I'm at Lysander's meeting tonight.
Because I always think we should be the last signature.
Well, we could wait a while.
Chuck feels comfortable with it, I feel comfortable with it.
So, we're, the motion's to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement.
I'll make a motion for the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. It's yours, Dick. Under new business, item A, a motion to appoint Brian Trowbridge as a water plant seasonal laborer in the Public Works Department, with an effective date to be determined by the Superintendent of Public Works. Got a motion? Second?
Second.
For those of you who are semi-new to the board, it's not like you haven't been in the village. Brian has been, was an employee in the water department for like, three decades. Yeah, so...
Brian's been fantastic over there. We've been, we've been picked by the EPA to be part of a pilot program, and into that, we have to do some, some procedures of what it takes to run the plants and stuff, and Brian is really good at that, and we've had him in there summers before, and the younger, the younger kids just won't leave alone, just ask him for, you know, "Where's this valve, where's that valve, where's all this equipment?" And he's, he's be perfect for this job.
Chuck, usually, these motions, when you're hiring a seasonal employee, have a rate and a starting date, do you have even a concept of when you might bring it on?
He's going to start soon, the rate is in the, we must have just forgot to put that down, because the rate's in the budget, you know, we have a rate of...
They'll be at $17 an hour.
Okay, like one of the other seasonal, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Welcome Brian back. Item B, a motion to receive the bids for the Tannery Creek Box Culvert Replacement and Stream Debris and Sediment Removal Project, that were submit, opened on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, at 2:00 PM. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Why do I say opposed? Everybody voted yes. Okay, carried. Now could I have a motion to award the bid to the Tannery Creek Box Culvert Replacement and Stream Debris and Sediment Removal Project to James Bray Paving LLC, in the amount of $145,000, and to authorize the Superintendent of Works to sign the notice of award? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just discussion about where the funding's coming for this.
Okay.
When we originally started talking about this, we believe it was going to be coming from the ARPA money, and that was early on, and since then, we've had some other meetings, but that was my understanding.
We've already spent some money on this project out of ARPA.
Yeah, this, this big number is, I mean, this is one of the things I was talking about with rapidly changing prices. We're in this environment where part of the issue with the ARPA money being, coming on the verge of being expended, is that pricing for things is changing, like, weekly. And so, this project was to be put under ARPA. The cost of that culvert, I think we thought was going to be $100,000. We managed to get it, I say "we," Superintendent and DPW Committee, I think, managed to get it in at 145, which those other bids are significantly higher, my understanding.
The bidding process saved a lot of money.
Yeah. So, but I think at this point, that's where this, and the NICOM has told us, this is like a home run project for the ARPA, the original intent of ARPA, and stormwater remediation, those kind of things. So, that's, that was the intent for paying for that. And that was one of the things that we were, we felt we were already locked in on. There's still a pool of money left that, you know, there's, there's proposals from both DPW and the Police Department for those remaining funds.
Any more discussion?
Guess the discussion comes down if we want to spend the ARPA money, that we are pulling money out of the ARPA budget for this, and the budget is, what, $172,000 over budget, with all the projects that are listed? So we just have to decide that as a board, if this is the project we want to do, because with the ARPA money.
Have we not already committed ourselves to agreeing to spend that $100,000?
We've purchased the culvert.
I think we're, I think we're knee-deep in this one, to just got to see it all.
And this is one, a project that we've known of for many, many years, has never fit into our operating budget.
No, I'm not saying to do it, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page on what we're doing.
I appreciate it.
I think the remediation to that overage is going to be what, what we were talking about earlier, and that is finding other funding pipelines in existing funding, or saying some of the stuff we're not going to do. We, and again, I'm talking like recommending to you, some of the stuff may have to wait, would be a recommendation to you, and you'd have to decide that.
And, you know, the way a lot of this started was, you know, it was going to be for infrastructure, and I was tasked with get some of these projects, and we did that, and we have some that we needed. This one is a great project, it's something I don't think, it would have been difficult for us to do this, and that's kind of where this whole thing started, and...
And Chuck, didn't, did you happen to go down there today, when it was raining like crazy?
I didn't, no.
Because part of this project isn't just the bridge, it's to alleviate problems in the stream bed, in terms of obstructing flow, you know, everybody from Basel knows we've had some significant flooding issues in that area. Hopefully that corrects that.
And this is going to be our side of the project that they're talking about, too, on 60 Road, because a lot of the water issues come from up there, and we've had trouble with beer dams and all that, and when they let loose, that area can't handle it, and it's just full of trees down and all kinds of stuff. And if we get that cleaned up, it'd be great, this ARPA money was fantastic for that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and discussion. All in favor, rewarding the bid?
Aye.
Opposed? I voted aye also, just don't remember to vote ever. Item D, motion to amend the employee handbook, adding Juneteenth to Section 701 Holidays. I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second.
I'm going to be the ignorant person here, what date is Juneteenth, is it the 19th?
It's a Sunday. This year falls on a Sunday, so they would essentially get Monday.
Recognize it on Monday, yeah.
Okay, and the clerk has pointed this out, is it, has become a federal and state holiday?
That's correct.
I'm going to make my comments. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay, discussion. I'm troubled with it by the fact, please don't take offense, those of you covered by the employee handbook, we already have 15 paid holidays in the handbook, and adding another one, I don't think is in good conscience in terms of our duty to the citizens of... So, I would propose if we add Juneteenth, we need to remove one of the floaters, there's three floating holidays in there. Maintain or giving away, gatling away, but the handbook hands three weeks' worth of the... The three floaters are up to the employee to opt.
Do you choose to use them for a holiday?
One is a birthday floater, one was, I think, because they took, they took other holidays away, so they gave us...
Consolidated the President holiday from Lincoln and Washington separately.
Yes, or Good Friday. They gave us a floater instead of Good Friday.
That's my opinion.
I agree 100%. I've worked every birthday since I was 15, so I just don't understand. Even if I had to take it off, I'd use it as vacation.
I don't know if anyone ever uses it for their birthday, that is just what it was called.
If I could, I would. I agree, Bruce.
I think that publicly, this is probably a better way of getting a paid day off than your birthday, personally, so if we're going to do that, then, yeah, substitute with Juneteenth.
Another concern I have is that it's not in the union contracts, but it will be pretty dug on quickly, especially we go handing it to management first.
I don't know if they meant just for management. Mayor?
Yes?
Have you, we have spoken to Melinda regarding the union contracts, were you just, were they going to be affected by this also? They were, weren't they, going to be getting it off?
Yeah, they're, I'm trying to remember what exactly she said.
An amendment has to be done.
Yeah, there has to be a memorandum of agreement, and I don't know if it was just to give, just to give, I thought she was going to send us a sample, you know, like a letter we could use to approach DPW Union. Doesn't affect the police, because they get paid holidays in one lump sum in November or whatever, so it really doesn't have much impact there, they're just, they just get a bigger check. I'm not sure exactly what it was, Melinda did not follow up on that yet, so I'm sort of left in the dark on what she was proposing.
During DPW negotiations, the union requested two more holidays, and we rejected that. I don't know if this, I don't believe this was a specific one.
I don't recall.
I want to just tell everybody, just for knowledge, that of the 17 or 18 villages, about four of them do not celebrate this holiday, including us. There's, most of them do, and started last year. Liverpool does, they just added it to their holidays. It is a concern about how many holidays we're going to start racking up. I'm not exactly sure the best way to address this, any opinions, Bob?
Well, again, I think if you're going to make an adjustment relative to the floating, then I think the resolution would add, and then would have to, have to also make an adjustment relative to whatever language is in the handbook concerning those floating holidays.
Are those floating holidays referenced in our handbook, or are they referenced in our union agreement with the union?
The handbook and the agreement.
If it's all, do we have the luxury of being able to add and subtract something we've already contractually agreed to?
No, not with the union.
Not with the union.
So, can I make a recommendation as well, that I would seem to think that those employees covered by the handbook, maybe survey them, see if they, I mean, obviously, ultimately, it's up to the board what you choose to do, what you designate as holidays, but maybe they like the floating holidays comparatively to having Juneteenth off. I don't know the answer to that, again, it doesn't impact me, as the mayor said, he worked the holidays, it wasn't taken off, but for those employees that this would impact, they might really enjoy the floating holiday, because maybe they use it every year in conjunction with something else, and then this is a day, you know, maybe it's a Monday in June that, you know, they just assume come to work. I don't know the answer to that, but maybe it's something that we should ascertain before the board takes action on it, just a thought.
I'm a little confused.
Yeah, I don't know if that's that, I mean, Juneteenth, I don't think you could, I don't know, I don't think we could turn down Juneteenth, that's not the purpose of the holiday, I mean, it's a federal holiday.
I understand, but the board's talking about removing the summer holiday in place of this one.
The employees should decide that, I mean, it's a federal and a state holiday in honor of...
I don't like the look of, yeah, doing that, honestly.
Yeah, I mean, that's all I'm saying.
But to Bruce's point, we don't have the authority to take away a floater in a contract that we've agreed to.
This is with the employee handbook.
The employee handbook, you can do it if you want, but a union contract, you can't.
No, we can't adjust the union contract, that's negotiated.
So essentially, we're giving the union another day off, but not taking...
I don't think we're addressing the union issue at this point. We're strictly a job.
I doubt this was a planned thing, that's where I got confused.
It's, amend the employee handbook, is all the people...
Ginnie Ellis has given it to the non-union employees, and then they will negotiate with the union employees when the contract is up.
Okay, that works.
Yeah, see, this board has, for the non-represented employees, we are, make unilateral decisions, basically. Yeah, we can't, the DPW contract is in place for the next four years. Unless they would approach us and discuss reopening, which opens a can of worms that they may not want, we may not want to agree to. It has to wait.
So you could have the supply of the non-union employees?
Yeah, and we could make a decision that might suggest it regarding floating holidays or something like, I'm proposing at another date. As long as they try to use all your floaters.
Happy birthday, Mo, happy birthday last week, yay next week.
Does anybody on this board know historically how you responded when Martin Luther King Day became a federal holiday, and what, how that impacted, what was the current situation?
That's a formality.
I'm just curious, because that would have been the most recent other federal holiday to be presented to you.
I have a very vague memory of DPW negotiations, and I don't know if they want to discuss it publicly.
I think we offered a holiday today because Martin Luther King Day falls right in the middle of snowplow season, and there was a concern that they all had that day off, and then it was a blizzard, it'd be a fiasco, trying to get everybody in, a holiday on that, and so I think, I think it was agreed that... that they would be given a floater in place of Martin Luther King Day.
Can I make a request? Can you request that we table this with, for an executive session with possible action after the executive session?
I believe this is a contractual issue.
Yes.
Potentially with the DPW and the PBA.
Yes. That was right.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
But on the agenda, like, we don't mention the unions. Do you want, so for the employee handbook also?
We just need to have.
I would, I would ask, based upon conversations I've had with elected officials, that the board not take action on this particular motion until an executive session occurs.
I'll second.
Okay, so now that's item J is an executive session.
We have an open, open first and second on this motion. So I don't know how do we move forward with, do we table, we have to vote to table this first and then go to?
Right.
Okay. So do we have to vote to table the motion that's currently open?
Which she just did.
You moved the motion to executive session.
All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
And then are you going to make a motion to go into, have an executive session? Very hip, too. Oh, we're not going in yet.
Yeah.
Just adding it to the agenda. So somebody made a motion. Can we have all in favor of that, executive session, item J?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Who made the motion? Do my food.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll move on to. Item E, where is it? Appoint Joseph G. Sarah, is that correct, pronouncing the third, as a part-time police officer at a rate of $28 per hour with an effective date of July 2nd, 2022. Make a motion. Okay, could I have a second? Okay. Any discussion?
Like we'd like to discuss, Joe.
Chief, do you want to make any comment on the appointment of the officer?
Oh, yes, thank you. I apologize. I was on the sidebar with the superintendent here. Joe's coming to us from the Hampton, Virginia Police Department. He's worked down there for a couple of years. He's originally from Central New York. He and his fiancee, they have a child together. His mother-in-law is a village resident here. They're going to be making their home in Baldwinsville. They've decided that Central New York is where they want to live and specifically Baldwinsville. So he approached us, reached out to us. There are a number of hurdles that we have to jump over to get him certified in New York State. We've sent his training record from Virginia to DCJS. They will be, they have, they've sent that back to us. We know what we need to accomplish. Officer Natoli obviously is pregnant. She's on late duty. She's a certified instructor. So we're going to be utilizing her for a number of things. There's some other stuff that we'll have to piecemeal in from other agencies and hire some instructors. But still, this will allow us to hire him part-time. He's taken the civil service exam. Once he's passed that, he's a village resident, we can do a village preference and hopefully put him on full-time. That's our intent, is he'll take our full-time vacancy position. So right now, he will not receive, obviously, insurance, your health insurance and those types of things from the village because he's not going to be a full-time employee. But we're going to work him significant hours. We can work him 1,040 hours in a part-time capacity. And hopefully, long before that, he'll have his civil service results back and then we can plug him in full-time. So right now, it's a savings for the village in several areas financially. And this rate, I think, demonstrates our commitment to him. It's still less than what the contractual rate would be for a step-three officer. And that contract is three raises due, three years without a raise. So obviously, we're in arbitration on that now. So that rate would likely be higher than what this is. And it's still nearly $2 less than what the rate of the contract presently is. So I think it benefits the village. It shows a commitment to him. He's showing a commitment to us by quitting his full-time job and moving to Balmsall to take a part-time job with no real guarantees because he's the one that has to pass the test in physical agility and complete the training. But, you know, we're excited to have him and looking forward to it. So with the board's approval, we'll notify him and then we'll notify his PD that he's going to be leaving and coming up here.
Very good, thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, then.
Item F.
F. Need a motion declaring the village board as a lead agency for the seeker.
For the, so, um, change application for parcel 005-01-03.1 as a type, declaring it to be a type-one action and referring the matter to the village planning board for recommendation.
Could I have that motion?
Move.
And could, Bob, you share that with our village clerk?
Yes.
A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we got one here. Thanks. Oh, James is going to leave on that one.
Oh, so you put in the referral to the landlord and I don't mind that.
Did you?
He did one motion.
Wow. Good job, Bob.
Bob, do we have to do the, the letter as well?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's by, under regulation, that knows the referral letter. I mean, notification letters are done by secret regulations.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. So G's done too. H, have a motion to retire an executive session for a policeman. Motion. Fifty weeks.
I think there's three. There's going to be three.
You do all three? Are we expecting any action after any of them?
I'm thinking so.
I think we have to probably act on the one that Juneteenth is Sunday.
Yeah, I would think. Okay.
So we'll make a quick motion, stick around.
So I have a motion to go into retiring the executive session. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.